Good evening and welcome, everybody. It got quiet, and so I figured that was my cue to start the meeting. I want to welcome everybody to our last meeting of the year, December 18th. And I'd like to go ahead and call the order with the invocation and the pledge led by Mr. Weaver.
Thank you. As we gather, we are grateful for, appreciate, and use each day that comes before us, for each day's duties, for each day's difficulties. We are challenged to give our best, always, in service to one another and to our community. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The police department is honoring you with this flag for your service. And then it also has our word here for you. We flew this today for 34 minutes, or a minute for every year of your service to the city. And we pulled it down, folded it in case of emergency.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, item B, additions or corrections to the agenda. Do we have any?
Need a roll call.
Roll call. Thank you. Angela?
Here.
Bowers?
Here.
McGregor?
Here.
Padova?
Here.
Renner?
Here.
Schnitzer?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
All right, thank you. Now, item B, additions or corrections to agenda. Do we have any? Seeing none, all right. Item C, hearing of visitors.
Mr. President, if I could, I believe there's supposed to be a correction to the agenda in terms of the order with regard to the presentation of salary and benefits ordinance.
I did receive that request, and we're going to keep the agenda as is.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, item C, hearing of visitors. We do have joint resolutions between council and the mayor.
Want to go first?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
I did not rehearse this, so I'm going to try to stay.
I'm going to make you cry, okay?
Yes, ma'am. So, we have a resolution honoring 34 years of service. The mayor also has a proclamation that we worked with, and so she's supposed to be joining me down here. So, we did not rehearse this at all. So, but first, what we want to do is the resolution, and then council does have a gift for you. So, a resolution honoring and commending Karen J. Angelou for her 34 years of service as city council member for the city of Gehanna. Whereas Karen J. Angelou has served 12 terms of office as city council member, first winning office in 1981, representing Ward 2 for seven terms, and representing the city at large for five terms. Whereas Karen J. Angelou's record of 34 total years of service as an elected city council member is exceptional, not only for the city of Gehanna, but also for the municipal office holders across the nation. And whereas Karen J. Angelou serviced to the city, she proudly served as president of the council in 1984, 1987, 1993, 1998, and 2003, and vice president of the council, as chair of council committees, as Gehanna Jefferson Schools liaison, as trustee to the city Gehanna Community Improvement Corporation, and as founding member and representative to the Gehanna Convention and Visitors Bureau, as a representative to the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, and serving as its chair from 2020 to 2021, and as a member of numerous task force and community boards throughout the city. Whereas Karen J. Angelou has championed for the city of Gehanna on both regional and state levels, has been honored with the William H. Anderson Award from the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission for her leadership as an outstanding public service professional, and has received commendations from Mid-Ohio Township, the Ohio House of Representatives, the Ohio Senate, and the Lieutenant Governor's Office, and is the recipient of many awards and recognitions for her professional career as a music teacher for the Franklin County Board of Developmental Disabilities. And whereas Karen J. Angelou has worked tirelessly during her terms of office to improve the safety, health, and development and prosperity of the city of Gehanna to wit support for major roadway improvements, strategic plans, sewer and water improvements, community policing, office of industrial planning, land acquisition for parks, for public parks and recreation, municipal building improvements, construction and renovation, and prioritizing funding for safety and infrastructure services. You wear a cape. Whereas Karen J. Angelou has worked tirelessly during her terms of office to improve -- I said that, sorry. Whereas Karen Angelou has served the city of Gehanna with honor and deserving of commendation for her commitment to Gehanna's vision of being in an innovative model community that values its rich heritage, pursues high standards in ensuring that Gehanna is a city where citizens respect one another, abides by its mission to provide a city government that is responsive, accessible, and accountable to the city's diverse and growing community of citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved by this council and proclamation by the mayor of the city of Gehanna, county of Franklin, state of Ohio, that the city of Gehanna does hereby honor and commend Karen J. Angelou for her contributions to the city of Gehanna as a city council member, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest period by law.
Thank you so much. I'm mesmerized with all of this wonderful things that people are talking about. And I know I'm going to cry, but I'm going to try not to. We have wonderful people here. We have wonderful people here. You are the people that make this work. And I've just been lucky to be able to be around it. And I thank all of you for all of this tonight. This is beautiful, thank you.
You're very welcome. So, we'd like to -- council would like to present to you this gift, commemorative for the city of Gehanna for the years of service that you've done. Please. It's a map of the city of Gehanna on slate, and we were thinking that with Gehanna is the three creeks where we find slate, this is apropos to you.
Perfect, it's absolutely terrific.
So, I actually have some comments, I'm going to read them. So, Councilwoman Angelou, it is impossible to encapsulate the gratitude that we feel for you today after your 34 years of service to the city of Gehanna. Your unwavering commitment to our community has left an indelible mark, and we're profoundly grateful for all that you have done for all of us. You've been a pillar of support, a source of inspiration, and a true friend to many. And your leadership, characterized by your integrity, your compassion, and your dedication to always wanting to do the right thing, has been a high standard that you've set for all of us. Throughout the last 34 years, you have not only navigated the complexities of governance, which we know can be difficult, but you've also touched the lives of countless community members as a teacher, as a friend, as a council member, as a neighbor. And I think that was evident in these chambers last Tuesday, when this room was filled with people who came to honor you and to thank you. Your dedication, your wisdom, and camaraderie will be sorely missed, and I personally will miss seeing the way your face shines every time you talk about the Gehanna Way. May your retirement be filled with joy, relaxation, and adventures. Thank you for being a remarkable councilwoman, a passionate advocate for Gehanna and for the Columbus region, an inspiring role model, and a dear friend. Personally, and on behalf of the city of Gehanna, I wish you nothing but the best, and I know you're not going far. You have left an incredible legacy for the community, one that will have impacts on generations to come. And so now, on behalf of the mayor's office and our administrative staff, we'd like to present you with this gift to honor the legacy that you have left for the city of Gehanna. So, you can read it, like in your spare time.
Oh.
Thank you for your 34 years, and to the next 34.
Oh, my goodness. I can't thank enough. And I want you to know that this has great meaning to me, I will never forget it. And I hope that everything moves so wonderful for our great city of Gehanna. And I'm just -- I just cannot speak anymore. It's been so amazing, all of these gifts, and I just was there. I mean, if you're there, you're going to want to do good things. And so, I'm excited about the new person that's going to be here, and I hope that our -- my colleagues have wonderful, wonderful works, and our mayor, and our wonderful person here, Stephen. I have so many people that I would love to be able to talk to, but I -- we have all this stuff to do now. But I want to tell you, it's wonderful to be in an organization like this, and it's wonderful to be in a city like this, and I can't imagine being anyplace else. So, thank you so much. The police, thank you so much. Everybody here, thank you so much. I -- thank you.
I'd like to actually -- we have a distinguished guest, the director of Morpsy, William Murdock. He'd like to actually make a few words.
Whatever you want.
This man is really wonderful.
She's kind, she's kind.
I'm going to pick up.
Well, good evening, members of Gehanna City Council, Mayor Jadwin, other members in the room. I appreciate the chance to make public comment this evening. I'm William Murdock, I'm the executive director of the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. I like to say that our friends call us Morpsy, so you can all call us Morpsy. Some of you may know that I started the first decade of my career with the city of Gehanna as an intern in parks, moving through planning and development, so it's always great to be here in what I consider to be my professional hometown. Now, normally, when I present to you, I first thank you for being an involved member of community in Morpsy. And you know that we do work around the region to help communities like Gehanna, and everything from transportation, water, sustainability. And I have to tell you, it's easy to do when I'm in Gehanna, because with councilperson Angelou, Mayor Jadwin, several members of council on our committees, Gehanna is one of our most involved, leading communities, and we appreciate that, thank you. And then I usually go on to present to you about things like the regional water strategy, your transportation plans, your passenger rail, and I'm not going to do that this evening for two reasons. First, we'll be sharing more with you in the new year, and we welcome the new council people. But second, and most importantly, I know that councilmember Karen Angelou has reliably kept you very well informed on Morpsy through the years, as a great advocate and a great representative for us, so I know that you are familiar with our initiatives. What I am here to do is to celebrate Karen Angelou. And on behalf of our board of 87 communities around central Ohio, and over 160 board members and our staff, I'd like to share publicly our collective gratitude for councilmember Angelou's service and leadership to central Ohio and to Morpsy, and congratulations to you for all your years of service to the people of Gehanna. Now, you may know this, but Karen Angelou has been an active, involved leader at the regional level with Morpsy for over a decade. She's been deeply involved on leadership committees, everything from our executive committee to those covering things like air quality, transportation, buildings, economic development, and so much more. And while she's done it, she's been consistently a strong voice for the city of Gehanna at that regional table, advocating for things like housing, public service, passenger rail, I could go on. Most notably, Karen Angelou served as Morpsy's board chair. This is a position that is elected by peers across the region for leadership. And she became chair during what was a very unprecedented and challenging time, which was the pandemic. Just to make the point, her first meeting as chair was our first ever all-virtual meeting in April 2020. She jumped in as no chair had ever done before, and gave us and her colleagues across the reason a vision and a call to action for collaboration during a really difficult time. She helped everyone navigate that time with grace, with the unique touch that only she could bring, with a talent and a passion for music and its role in improving lives. Every board meeting, some of you may know this, every board meeting, there it is, she brought a song of the month to lift our work higher, to keep us focused, to keep us moving past divisions on what we could do together. And I can't tell you how much that meant to so many. Our team at Morpsy is also grateful for Karen's leadership. We all know her as someone who lifts us up, cares about our work, motivates us to do better. It's not a surprise to see her visiting our staff to cheer them up, rally them on, and challenge them to do better. Now, councilmembers, I know too that you know well, as we just saw, the incredible legacy of public service Karen has to Gehanna and beyond in her whole life. It's touched not only your community, but I'm here to tell you, it's touched the whole region. And also, on a personal note, it's touched me personally as her service impacted my own career in public service. I've known and admired Karen Angelou since the first year of my career as an intern in parks, and ever since, and Karen's energy and vision continues to be an inspiring example. It's been a privilege to work with her at Gehanna and at Morpsy for so many years. Karen, you've left a legacy with Morpsy and the region, and all of our members, our staff, we are grateful for that. Congratulations on your retirement for city council. Thank you, Council President Renner, for letting me address you today, and good luck. We look forward to your next chapter.
Thank you so much. Can I say a few words?
Please.
I've had these for a while here, and Dan will notice this as well, but I'd like to say this to all of you, if I can make through. So, here I am in 1981, running for office with no idea it would be a total of 34 years. I look around our community now and see magnificent growth from a village to the diverse city of almost 36,000, I think it is 36,000. I have been blessed to be a part of this great community, and I thank God every day. Thank you to the people of the great city of Gehanna, who have supported me for so many years of leadership, commitment, and trust. My hat goes off to all the wonderful, dedicated people I have had, to the pleasure to work with, and I thank you again, and so many years of support. Thank you so very much. I couldn't do all this without you, so thank you.
Mayor, I believe, do you have another proclamation?
I do. Thank you very much. The holiday season is known to be the season of being merry and bright, but it's also -- we're going to go from here, down to here, back up to here, I promise. The holiday season is known to be merry and bright, but it's also a season that is known to be the deadliest time for impaired driving. December is National Impaired Driving Prevention Month, which has been observed for more than 40 years to raise awareness around the dangers of impaired driving, which not only puts the driver at risk, but also puts at risk passengers and the safety of others on the road. In Gehanna, our officers of the Gehanna Division of Police, many of whom are standing in this room, remain committed to providing our roadways, protecting our roadways from impaired drivers. And just some statistics, in 2022, the division made 171 OVI, operating a vehicle impaired arrest, 171 OVI arrests during the year. Through November of this year, the division has made 172 arrests, and we're still counting through December. In 2023, the average blood alcohol content of arrestees submitting to breath testing in the state of Ohio is .19, which is more than two times the legal limit for intoxication. Last week, I, along with Director Becker, Chief Spence, Deputy Chief Lawless, Lieutenant Moffett, and Sergeant Utte, had the pleasure of witnessing Officer Jeff Hoffman be honored for the second consecutive year by Mothers Against Drunk Driving for his commitment to removing impaired drivers from our roadways. Officer Hoffman has led the division in OVI arrests each of the last three years, and over the last three years, the number of his arrests are more than 23% of the division's overall arrest total. And his year-to-date total of 44 arrests thus far in 2023 currently represents more than 25% of the division's total arrests. Officer Hoffman is truly deserving of the recognition that he has received from MAD for his efforts, and we applaud and are grateful for both he and all the members of our Division of Police for their efforts to keep our roadway safe and protect us from impaired driving. So, with that, I'd like to present a proclamation officially designating December as National Impaired Driving Prevention Month to not only Officer Hoffman, but to all of the members of our Gehanna Division of Police for their work in keeping Gehanna safe. Officer Hoffman, where are you? Come on up here. Oh, Dan, photo op. Thank you for your work, Officer.
Okay, we have another resolution. Mr. City Attorney, can you join me? Pass her, please. All right, thank you. Council wants to also recognize Ray Malarsky for your years of service. A resolution honoring, commending Raymond J. Malarsky for over 35 years of service as a prosecutor and four years of service as city attorney for the city of Gehanna. Whereas, the city first contracted with Raymond J. Malarsky Esquire in 1987 to provide prosecutorial services of certain cases resulting from Gehanna's mayor's court. Whereas Raymond J. Malarsky has diligently served as a city of Gehanna prosecutor for over 35 years, working effectively to resolve issues while protecting the interest of all residents. And whereas Raymond J. Malarsky was elected as Gehanna's third elected city attorney in 2019 and served a four-year term as the city's chief legal officer, during which time he provided invaluable counsel and guidance to city officials, staff, and board and commission members. And whereas, in his nearly four decades of service to the community, Raymond J. Malarsky has been dedicated to creating a safe and prosperous Gehanna for all its citizens. And whereas, in his role as city attorney, Raymond J. Malarsky successfully defended claims and prevented lawsuits, and scrutinized city contracts in a way that ensured legal protection and the continued financial prudence of the city. And whereas Raymond J. Malarsky has demonstrated a commitment to service to the community as a lifetime member of the Kiwanis, and as a volunteer for the Creekside Blues and Jazz Festival, Ronald and its citizens as prosecutor and city attorney. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council and proclaimed by the mayor of the city of Gehanna, County of Franklin, State of Ohio, Section One, that the city of Gehanna does hereby honor and commend Mr. Raymond J. Malarsky for his contributions to the city of Gehanna and its citizens as prosecutor and city attorney. And Two, that this resolution shall be in full force and affect at the earliest period by law. Mr. Malarsky, thank you very, very much.
As you know, I'm making a few words, but I would like to say it's been a pleasure working for you guys and the, or with you guys in the city of Gehanna. I just wanted, I've always tried my best. I hope I've left this city in a better place than when I came in. That's all I'd like to, and I hope it works that way. But thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Council President, we have one additional ceremonial resolution to present to the Make Gehanna Yours Farmers Market Team. We would like to thank specifically Donna Simmons, Kate Mazarick, Jan Little, and Rhonda Jensen for your countless hours of service to the city of Gehanna and its residents, and for all of your efforts in producing and maintaining a farmers' market through all volunteer labor for the last five years. We know how much of a commitment that has been and know how valuable in concept and in practice farmers' markets are to our communities. So with that, I think all of us are going to join the four of you, if you'd like to come up, and present you with copies of the resolution and small tokens of our appreciation. So thank you.
Now, we're to the hearing of visitors, traditionally where we hear members of public. I do have speaker slips. If you do wish to speak before council during this time, there's still time. Make sure that you see our clerk and fill out a speaker form. The first one I have, oh, and by the way, the council rules, when I call your name, step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. First one I have is Allison Tate.
Good evening. I'm Allison Tate. My address is 455 Whitley Drive. I'm here to speak in favor of adding a second rec coordinator position to enhance events within the city. I've been a Gehanna resident for twelve years. I am a board member on the Parks and Rec Foundation Board, and I am chair of the Hops and Vines event, which is our foundation's largest fundraiser. And this past year, we're proud to say that we raised more than forty thousand dollars to support the Parks and Recs initiatives in the city. I'm also a corporate partner. I work at Kembah Financial Credit Union. I've been there for thirteen years in the marketing department and have also, with that, played a key role in developing community sponsorships and supporting different events within the community. So I have a unique perspective with all these different angles, being a resident, being involved in the foundation board, and also working in the community. As a representative, as representatives of the city, the council, the different boards within the city, like the one I serve on, I think we can all agree that we want Gehanna to be the best place to live, work, and play, which is something that I know the Parks and Rec Department is a phrase that they like to use. And I really do embody that in the fullest form. It has to do with quality of life for residents, the best facilities and programming available, and also presenting new and exciting events and opportunities. We want our residents to stay in the city because it impacts local businesses, restaurants, and benefits the local economy. We don't want them visiting our neighboring communities regularly to meet their needs. We want residents of other communities to visit Gehanna, bring their dollars here, and support our community. Residents like me want to be proud of the city that we call home. All in all, this really unites the community. So how does this relate to my support for a second recreational coordinator position? I think we can all agree that current events are very popular and crowded in the city. People want to get out, and people want to be involved. Local businesses, like Kembah, were eager to get out and get involved and support the community. With the city's success getting new businesses in, there's going to be a lot of new people looking for different ways to get involved. Community participation is a key way in which businesses engage in the communities that they serve. With that, I think we all know that events take a lot of time. As an active member of the Hops and Vines Committee for multiple years now, I know firsthand the time and effort it takes. It's not a job for one person, especially in a city of our size. There's countless things to think about: logistics, vendor management, sponsorships, communication, promotions, and more. It takes months and months, which is a lot of overlapping tasks. Gehanna needs to keep the talent that it has. Events are not sustainable being managed by one person. It will cause, could cause turnover and uncertainty in the event space. When we support the talent we have, we can do bigger and better things to keep them working within our community. So in conclusion, we all asked, as a Parks and Rec, I shouldn't say we, the city, did the survey recently, and I think it was loud and clear that maintaining or increasing special events is a top priority. People really spoke out, and they expect the representatives of their city to listen to what they're asking for. Reducing or not adequately supporting events is in direct conflict of what the residents want. We want to give residents, again, a sense of pride in the community. We want to keep them local, and we want to make it a great place to play. So for these reasons, I ask that you strongly consider supporting the addition of a second recreational coordinator to keep our city moving in the right direction and giving residents what they truly want in the community.
Ms. Tate, thank you very much. We realized a little bit later, after you started talking, that your comments are probably more appropriate for the budget hearing, which is next. So I ask my colleagues to actually consider Ms. Tate's comments for that. Thank you. All right. Next up is Mr. Dustin Holfinger.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Dustin Holfinger. I live at 3098 East High Street, Springfield, Ohio. Thank you for the opportunity to come in again this evening to present to you. I really just wanted to bring to you, bring something to your attention. As you guys are hearing, I think it's 0712023 this evening, the tobacco retail license policy. You've probably seen or heard or read in the news that the Ohio House of Representatives took one step last week to override the governor's veto of tobacco preemption language from the state operating budget, House Bill 33. This language put in by the House and Senate, or approved by the House and Senate at the time, would have made it impossible and negated any tobacco control policies being passed at the local level here and anywhere else, and negate any ones that are already in effect now, including Columbus's flavor ban and other tobacco retail licensures that, as we know, are truly enforcement measures. I'm here tonight to ask that you continue to move forward with that provision and that vote. While the House has passed their side of it and voted to override the veto, the Senate has not, meaning that communities are still at liberty to pass their own tobacco retail licensure policies or tobacco control policies. And until the Senate does so, this is open for you guys to pass these types of policies. And again, I would urge you, if it's something you feel very strongly about, to protect your community this evening and take that important vote and that next step to ensure accountability of tobacco retailers, to make sure they are not making sales to underage customers. That is all.
Thank you. All right. The final speaker slip I have is a video by Christopher Pentuso, 3525 North 168th Circle, Apartment 123, Omaha, Nebraska. Please.
Good evening. My name is Chris Pentuso. I live at 3525 North 168th Circle, Apartment 123, in Omaha, Nebraska. I'm recording this video of thanks to the Gehanna Police Department and City Hall in general for helping to save my daughter. Without getting into details, last week, she was protesting the Israeli war on the campus of Ohio State University and had a mental break. Recording this video of thanks to the Gehanna for helping to save my daughter. Without getting into details, last week, she was protesting the Israeli war on the campus of Ohio State University and had a mental break. I contacted the Gehanna Police non-emergency number, and an incredible young lady dispatcher answered the call. I mentioned to her that my daughter was in danger of harming herself and her biological mother, my ex-wife, at the local Spring Hill Suites down the street from the police department. In about fourteen minutes, she dispatched two well-trained and disciplined police officers, who I later learned were skilled in mental health conversations, unlike most law enforcement departments in America. They did exactly what I needed to do, and that is take control of the situation. For I was on the phone from Omaha, Nebraska, and my daughter. They took her to a local psych emergency department, and she's, she's getting the help she needs. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you to our police department. Excuse me. All right. Item D, public hearings. We do have one. I'll read the rules for everybody. Pursuant to Council Rule 9.20.1, finance hearings, being a special circumstance, shall have the following rules. A, speakers shall have five minutes to speak on increases or additions of an item. B, speakers shall have five minutes to speak on reductions or removal of an item. C, speakers shall have three minutes to speak on general comments. Note, the minutes are a combined total for all who intend to speak. So that means Groups A, B, or C, it's five minutes for the entire group. All right. The public hearing tonight is for appropriations. Mayor, does the administration wish to make any comment before we open the hearing?
Not at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. The public hearing is now open, and I'm calling for speakers who wish for increases or additions of an item. And for the record, Ms. Tate, your comments would be inserted here. Are there any others that wish to speak on increases, increases or additions to the budget? Okay. Now calling for any speaker that wishes to speak on reductions or removal of an item. Any deductions of the proposed appropriations? All right. Looking, seeing none. Is there any general comments? Close the public hearing. All right. Item E, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved, Mr. President.
Have a first by Mr. Schnitzer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Angelou. All right. Any discussion? Jeremy, please call the roll.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
All right. Consent agenda is passed. All right. Item F, motions. We do have two. First up is Motion 002023, a motion to amend the rules of procedure of the Council of City of Gehanna, Section 3.20, regarding appointments by Council President. Do I have a first on passing this motion?
So moved.
Have a first by Ms. Bowers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Padova. Any discussion?
Yeah. Mr. President?
Yes, please. Ms. Bowers.
Thank you. I wanted to note that we adopted in the version with the date stamp of 12/18/23 to take into consideration Mr. Schnitzer's comments from the last meeting, formally inserting the appointment of the Finance Chair into 3.20 and cleaning up 7.10 accordingly. The remainder, including the remaining appointments, remains fairly consistent with practice, past practice, while also incorporating the CIP Advisory Committee language into 3.20. And so I present this for consideration to the body. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Jeremy, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Motion 0022-2003, a motion to appoint somebody to a vacant position to Civil Service Commission, Seat 4, and to the Fair Housing Board, Seat 1, for the concurrent unexpired term ending December 31, 2024. Do I have a motion to appoint anyone?
Mr. President?
Mr. Schnitzer?
I'd like to move to appoint Karen Wester to the Civil Service Commission, Seat 4, and to the Fair Housing Board, Seat 1, for the concurrent unexpired terms ending December 31, 2024.
Thank you. I do have a second?
Second, Mr. President.
By a second by Mr. Weaver. Any discussion on the appointment of Karen Wester to this unexpired term ending December 31, 2024? Okay. Jeremy, please call the roll.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Wester, congratulations. All right. Item G, resolutions. We already done them. So Item H, ordinances for introduction and first reading. We have one, 87-2023, an ordinance accepting, approving, ratifying the submitted recommendations for the City of Gehanna Tax Incentive Review Council for the year 2022. We're not taking any, we're not voting on this, so we're fine. Item I, ordinances for second reading and adoption, Ordinance 71, 2023. Hold on a second. All right. So we do have to go back on resolutions. Item G. I don't have anything on my agenda.
Do you want me to read by title?
Please.
Okay. First one is Resolution 0038-2023, a resolution honoring and commending Karen J. Angelou for her 34 years of service as a city council member for the City of Gehanna.
Do I have a first to adopt said resolution?
So moved, Mr. President.
Have a first by Mr. Schnitzer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Weaver. Any discussion? Okay. Please call the roll.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Angelou?
Can I vote for this? Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
All right. And Mr. Van Meter, can you read the second one, please?
Yes. Resolution 0039-2023, a resolution honoring and commending Raymond J. Malarsky for over 35 years of service as prosecutor and four years of service as city attorney for the City of Gehanna.
Thank you. Do I have a first to adopt said resolution?
So moved.
Have a first by Ms. Angelou and a second by Mr. Schnitzer. Any discussion? All right. Jeremy, please call the roll.
Angelou?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Back to Item I, ordinances for second reading and adoption. We have 71-2023, an ordinance adopting Chapter 737 of the Gehanna Clarified Ordinances to Establish the Tobacco Product Sales Licensing Program. Have a first to adopt said ordinance?
So moved.
Have a first by Ms. Padova. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Bowers. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Padova, please.
Thank you. So years ago, after learning about the deadly effects of cigarette use, we took a lot of preventative actions. In doing so, over the last 20 years, we were able to reduce adolescent cigarette use from 30% to less than 10% over the last 20 years. Then electronic cigarettes added flavors and hit the market. Adolescent tobacco use is once again over 30%. We're at another turning point where we must take action to protect children from addictive tobacco products. This ordinance will ensure that tobacco retailers in Gehanna are licensed, have the appropriate signage, and receive regular checks to ensure that employees are not illegally selling addictive substances to children. If retailers are found selling to underage, to people underage, the owners will be held accountable. Where so, there's no additional burden placed on the administration or police department, and all licensing and enforcement will be through the Franklin County Public Health Department. So I sincerely hope that my colleagues will join me in support of this ordinance to help reduce the increasing rate of youth tobacco use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Bowers?
Thank you. About 18 months ago, when we started working on considering tobacco legislation, we received an email from Mr. Holfinger, who I appreciate his dedicated advocacy on this. And so I wanted to remind us of some of the reasons why we initiated the efforts, and particularly Councilman Padova and Assistant City Attorney Matt Roth, on working on this major legislation. The tobacco retail licensing program would require that stores selling tobacco or vaping products are regulated and are held accountable to tobacco control laws. These requirements would allow officials in Franklin County Public Health to know where tobacco products are being sold and to provide oversight through compliance checks and not through criminalizing store clerks, which is unfortunately the current enforcement mechanism. Unfortunately, tobacco products are sold seemingly everywhere. It's made it very easy for youth and underage people to obtain cigarettes and other tobacco products. As we saw in an early presentation from the American Heart Association and the Tobacco 21 Coalition, all of the reduction in youth smoking behaviors or tobacco use behaviors that we saw from the time I was in school until now have been wiped out by the accessibility of flavored vaping products. By implementing a tobacco retail licensing program, we are not trying to create stronger or different laws. We are simply trying to enforce the laws that exist. I will continue to do my part in advocating with Senator Huffman and our state Senator Michelle Reynolds, and asking them not to override Governor Dewine's veto of the preemption. I also would ask my colleagues to consider that we adopt the retail licensing program today, and should it be preempted, should the veto be overridden by both sides of the General Assembly, that in effect this would just become a dormant and unenforced law, would not expose us to liability so long as we ceased enforcing it. I will be voting yes in strong support of this licensing tonight, and certainly hope my colleagues join me as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. Want to express my gratitude to everyone who's been involved in working on this legislation. A huge thank you to our colleague Ms. Padova, who has truly shepherded the legislation and been the driving force behind it here on this side of the dais. A big thank you to the City Attorney's Office as well, Mr. Roth. Want to thank Mr. Holfinger and your fellow advocates. I know this is not your first visit here this evening, so thank you for your continued advocacy. I would echo what Ms. Bowers said. What really stood out to me from the beginning of when we were first considering this legislation was the absolute reversal in the trend of youth tobacco use. And for me, it's clear that the status quo is not working, and it's up to municipalities to take some action. This is a small step that can be taken, and I will be voting in favor of the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Jeremy, please call the roll.
Padova?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Good. Ordinance passes. Thank you. All right. The next two ordinances, little tricky because we're going to have to amend by substitution. So the first ordinance, 0080-2023, an ordinance to make appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Gehanna, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024. Do I have a motion to adopt said ordinance?
So moved, Mr. President.
Have a first by Mr. Schnitzer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Angelou. All right. We're now under discussion. Do I have a motion to amend by substitution?
So moved, Mr. President. Do I need to reference the attachment?
I think for the public record, please.
So I'll move to amend in reference to Exhibit A, or the file attached, the attached file, I'm sorry, Exhibit A, Appropriations Ordinance 24, final.
Thank you. We have a first for amendment by substitution of Exhibit A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. Any discussion on this motion to amend by substitution? Mr. Schnitzer?
So I have a couple of comments. I'm just going to say the one first, and then I guess turn it back over for discussion. But before we vote, I'll have further comments. I do just want to call to council's attention, under the amendment, just because based on my recollection of a week ago, at our Finance Committee meeting, it didn't receive a lot of discussion. But there's $100,000 ad for a staffing study, and this will fall on the, if you have this document in front of you, it's under the General Fund, under General Government and Finance, so it takes that line item from 2.57 million to 2.67 million. So just want to make sure the council has had an opportunity to see that. Again, just mainly because I don't think it received much discussion a week ago.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any further discussion on the amendment by substitution?
I guess I have, just as a matter of process, do you want general discussion regarding?
Right now, it's just on the amendment by, so do you have anything about the amendment? And then we'll move it to discussion of the higher, larger item.
Okay. Well, then I guess I'll hold my comments for...
Okay. Fair enough. Any other discussions? On the amendment? All right. Jeremy, please call the roll.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes. All right. Thank you. So the amendment passes. Now back to the original 80-2023. Mr. Schnitzer?
Thank you, Mr. President. This may be the most involved budget that I think that I have seen in my tenure here, but just a few highlights, I think it continues our commitment to public safety. Just a few examples. It funds interactive speed warning signs. It funds two sergeants' positions in our Division of Police, as well as an SRO position. It provides those first responders with the vital equipment that they need to do their jobs safely, including radio equipment and vehicle replacement. It continues our commitment to Parks and Recreation in the form of playground and shade and structure lifecycle replacement. There's also a down payment on the Action Sports Park that received much discussion over the last few weeks. And on the infrastructure side, it expands a trail network via the Link Literacy Trail and the Hanukkah Headley Connector Trail, as well as additional funding to complete Big Walnut Trail, Section 8. It continues the city's aggressive catch-up of street rebuilds and asphalt overlay program that directly impacts residents' property values, and it also commits nearly 1.7 million in funds authorized for water line replacement and nearly 1 million in stormwater maintenance. So the three primary silos that the City of Gehanna is responsible for, because no other unit of government is, and that is public safety, Parks and Recreation, and infrastructure, I think this budget continues to make significant progress on those responsibilities that we all have.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Ms. Bowers?
Thank you. I did want to ask for perhaps some questions from the administration and receive a little bit of clarity regarding the reconciliation document that was circulated on Friday. Overall, there were, I believe, 13 additional positions that were requested with a total of about $1.5 million in new staffing, new staffing positions. Of those approximately 13 positions, three were identified as just being, as being deferred. And so I wanted to go over this document. I thank you to Mr. Schnitzer for calling out the added staffing study, but I did have, I'd like to understand from the administration, there had been, I think, a request of approximately $885,000 in cuts to the budget, and the actual reductions are 441,000. Did the administration want to comment on that?
So as I had noted at the end of last week's meeting, that there were other items that were going to be coming forward that we had identified as an administration, going back through the document. So while those reductions are in there, you'll also see that there are some additions, which are the items that are not in parentheses or additions to, including the five-year staffing study. We had some errors that were identified in our projection module. We do use a software system to do it. At times, there are glitches. We identified them, so we brought those forward. They're small, but we felt that we needed to bring those forward since they were identified. We also had some additional hours for the Public Safety Director, and we identified that a communications technician was incidentally dropped off the projection in error, so that was adding them back. And then we have the Street Tree Program, which there was identified contract services increases there as additional items came to light. And then we also have the Lieutenant and Sergeant Assessment Center. Once quotes came back in, and we got additional information there, we also needed an increase for that. Do you want me to go down each fund, or do you have questions on, those are all just the general fund? Any questions there?
I think the general question that I had was on the five-year staffing study, since I think it was, it was not really fleshed out completely. Would you explain the scope of that and what that entails?
Yeah. So the five-year staffing plan would be for the police department and for non-police staff as well. That staffing study would take into consideration current operations. It would work with the capital improvement plan to see the capital items being planned for the next five years as well. It would also take into consideration moving to a 130,000-square-foot building and 825 tech center, what that looks like from a facilities standpoint, what that looks like from a cleaning standpoint. It would take all those factors into consideration as well.
And the other specific question that I have is with regard, let me clarify. I'm very supportive of the mental health liaison position. I was surprised to see that as an added line item here, because my understanding was that we were converting a budgeted staff position to a contract services position. So could you explain the addition of the 122,000 for that position?
Yes. So if you notice, when you looked at the public service budget in the presentation, you saw a decrease to salaries and benefits there. That was another error that we identified, is the mental health liaison was dropped off of the projection. So this is just, it would have been added back in. This is just now being added back in as a contract service versus a employed position.
I don't think I have any other questions, but maybe we can come back after questions are completed, and I'll have comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'd just like to say, acknowledge that we've been through a pretty... I'd just like to say, acknowledge that we've been through a pretty extensive budget season, and I want to thank my colleagues on council and the administration for your patience and diligence as we go through these questions. I feel like you've done your homework and you've been presenting answers to our questions. We are trying to meet your deadline and trying to make sure that we can actually pass this with confidence tonight in the timeline that you asked, but I thank you so much for your patience. Any other comments?
Sure, I'll make a comment. I wanted to circle back since especially we have some people here tonight who are, and we've gotten some contact about the Recreation Coordinator 2 position, and I wanted to add a little bit of context and address some of those concerns. So there were five additional positions that were requested in the Parks and Recreation Department as part of that total that I referenced earlier tonight, and this has been a very difficult process, and I thank Mr. Snutzer and Mr. Renner for bringing up that it has been a daunting and very intensive budget process. I have questioned myself all week whether requesting specifically the reduction in staffing was the right thing, but at the end of the day, the truism slow to hire applies here, and I'd rather ensure that the growth that we're doing is sustainable moderated and well within our ability to weather storms that may be on the horizon. I want our community to do well, to provide the services, the high quality of work, live, and play that we know we can do with high quality, with confidence, and at a sustainable pace. At the end of the day, we are limited by our revenue, and as we've identified at multiple points throughout this budget discussion process, with a projection of spending outpacing revenue by 2028, it did put us in a position where I felt that I needed to address things that maybe could be deferred or put off so that we can ensure that the revenue is keeping up with the wants of the community. There are major capital projects underway that need our ability to find, to fund that as well. I appreciate the hard work that's been done, I am concerned that we have not made adequate cuts at this point or deferments until we see long-term projects be funded, but I do appreciate everyone's hard work on this, thank you.
Okay, Jeremy, please call the roll.
Snutzer?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
All right, we have a budget for 2024. Okay, next one is ordinance 84-2023, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended agreement with the Gehanna Community Improvement Corporation, the CIC, and the city to further define use of funding. This one also will require an amendment, but first, do I have an adoption of the said ordinance?
So moved, Mr. President.
Have a first by Mr. Weaver, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Padova. All right, we're under discussion, and I'm searching for an amendment by substitution for this one.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to amend by substitution Exhibit A as amended, excuse me, revised amendment.
Thank you. I have a first by Ms. Bowers for a motion to amend by requested Exhibit A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All right, discussion under this amendment, this motion for amend by substitution, do I have any discussion on this?
Mr. President, just to clarify, I, Mr. Van Meter, is it identified as Exhibit A or is the correct exhibit the one that's titled amended revised amendment 12723?
The revised amendment 12723 is what you're voting on now.
Okay, yes.
Any discussion? All right, Jeremy, please call the roll on this amendment by substitution.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Snutzer?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
All right, thank you, and now back to discussion of the ordinance overall, any, do we have any further discussion? Jeremy, please call the roll.
Weaver?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Snutzer?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
All right, thank you, ordinance passes. Item J, ordinances for introduction waiver and emergency adoption, we do have three. First one is ordinance 88-2023, an ordinance establishing the salaries for personnel of the city of Gehanna for the period January 1, 2024 through December 31st, 2024, waiving second reading and declaring emergency. Do I have a motion to adopt said resolution?
So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. I have a first by Mr. Snutzer, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Padova, any discussion? Please, Mr. Snutzer?
Just a clarifying question for the administration, and it relates to the Clemens Nelson study that is essentially the basis for this. The question that I have is, I know it's been referenced in past committee meetings, and as I was combing through the document, I was able to find, there's a clause in there that talks about the establishment of the deputy chief's pay as well as the chief's pay, and it has to do with 8% and 12% respectively above the lieutenant's pay band, and I'm just curious, does this ordinance still allow for that, or does the establishment of the C-27 pay band preclude that approach that we've had on file for some time now?
It does not change that approach if that's the approach the city chooses to move forward to. It allows a higher earning potential for both of those positions. And the back of the Clemens Nelson report was memo that Ms. Miller put together indicating the pay for surrounding chiefs and deputy chiefs in that position. This allows it to be uncoupled with the FOP negotiated contract.
Let me ask that in maybe a more practical manner. So I think the high degree of training associated with the chief's position and the deputy chief's position, the life and death nature of what they deal with on a regular basis, and the 24 hours, 365 days a year nature of what they do, that I think inarguably those positions should likely be the highest paid positions in the city of Gehanna, that's my view. So I just want to make sure that the staffing ordinance that we're passing, or the salary ordinance that we're passing right now, is consistent with that view.
If that is your view, that is consistent, the chief of police is the highest paid person on base salary in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Jeremy, please call the roll.
Snutzer?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
Bowers?
No.
All right, ordinance passes. Ordinance 89-2023, an ordinance establishing the benefits per personnel of the city of Gehanna effective January 1, 2024, waiving second reading and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion to adopt said ordinance?
So moved.
Have a first by Ms. Bowers, do I have a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Have a second by Mr. Weaver, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Weaver, please.
Thank you, sir. If I could, I'd like to invite Senior Director Volmer. We had a, as a follow-up to last week's meeting, we had a conversation, and I would just ask that Director Volmer walk us through the changes here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Weaver. So after a discussion with council last week, we took a look back at the sick leave conversion section of the benefits ordinance and reduced that from 480 hours to 200 hours, so that will allow those covered by the benefits ordinance, if they have 200 hours in their combined sick leave bank, their Gehanna bank, and a prior sick leave bank, at the end of the year, they can convert up to 80 hours for half of, half of that either paid out or turned into personal leave that must be used within the next calendar year and is not eligible for payout.
Thank you, Director, and this is, as a follow-up to the line of questioning last week where I expressed my concerns that the threshold to be eligible to convert any of your sick leave seemed high to accomplish the city's task of encouraging staff to do that conversion, ultimately saving the city money in the long run rather than having to pay out when staff is earning at a higher rate. Is that correct, Director Volmer?
Yes, that is correct.
That's it for me, Mr. President, thank you.
Well said, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, Jeremy, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Snutzer?
Yes.
All right, ordinance passes. Third one, ordinance 90-2023, an ordinance to amend ordinance 0091-2021 and ordinance 60-2022, authorizing the mayor to sign and adopt the pay administration policy effective January 1, 2024, waiving second reading and declaring emergency. Do I have a motion to adopt said ordinance?
So moved.
Have a first by Ms. Bowers, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Snutzer, any discussion? All right, Jeremy, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Snutzer?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
All right, thank you, ordinance passes.
Item K, correspondence and actions. Mr. Clerk, do you have anything for us?
I have one item. This is a notice to the legislative authority from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. This is for Premier Broadcasting Company Incorporated, doing business as Massey's Pizza, 261 Lincoln Circle, Gehanna, Ohio. The application is for a change in corporate stock ownership. This was forwarded to the Division of Police and there are no objections.
All right, thank you. Colleagues on council, do we have anything? Ms. Bowers?
Mr. President, thank you. Just since this is our last meeting of the year, I wanted to bring to the attention of council that I, having reviewed charter and council rules and spoken with Clerk Van Meter and Council President as well, we are looking at proposing a slight reduction to committee meetings. I'd like to certainly talk with Director Volmer and the rest of the administration about this, certainly don't want to cause any problems, but asking council members to consider possible bye weeks during holiday weeks from committee meetings, and to also consider your July calendars. We are required by charter to meet two times a month for regular council meetings, but not prescribed which dates, so I wanted to give the opportunity to consider to hold July meetings with plenty of advance notice to the public, like I said, maybe not during holiday week, so just wanted to bring that to your attention for discussion, and if you have thoughts, please feel free to forward them to Clerk Van Meter. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you. Item L, representatives, Community Improvement Corporation. We do have a meeting tomorrow at 8:00 in the...
7:30.
Oh, 7:30. Thank you, I'll adjust my calendar. In the committee rooms, no, actually it's in the golf course. That's right. This is a, oh, that's right. You know what, yeah, so this is actually the last of the year where council, all of council and CIC meets at the golf course at 7:30. So please come. Do you have anything further to add?
I can't top that one, Mr. President.
Well, it's December and I'm anxious to, you know, go on break. All right, thank you. Item 2, Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Ms. Angelou?
Well, we were very happy to have Mr. William Mordick at our, coming here. I was happy to have him here because he's a special friend. We had some nominating committee things that, where we're with Ben Kessler, city of Bexley, I'd like to say great city, but it's only our particular city that gets great before it. Some of the things that have happened, and this is the one that is the biggest one, passenger rail, Amtrak, and it's going to happen because it's the administration, the federal administration is going to be doing this. So it's, it's going to take about seven years before it can be done, and it'll be, the next steps will take 18 to 36 months, and we can only hope that it will all go through because we have worked on that for probably, well, I've been there 12 years and it's been off and on, off and on, and so this is something that is really wonderful for our, our community, our, the region, and it's, it's going to be a terrific thing. We did have something here, there were a lot of things that were happening, but they're going to be for next year, so I'm going to think, say that I'm not going to give all that information. But we did have another resolution that accepting Brown Township from Franklin County as a member of the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, this is, will be number 87. When I first came there, it was 35, we had 35 communities, and now we have 87. We also accepted the fiscal budget, we do budgets there too, and that, that did pass. I actually think that there are, I'm going to name some of the things that we'll be looking at. We have in, let me find this here, Drive Investment Portal, that, that was there, there's all these things that, again, are going to be taking, having done next year because we are working hard on the things that have done. I, I think that, sorry, I'm trying to find the spot that I need. I guess it'd be here. Anyway, I, I don't think there's much more that we can do. We had information given to us on things in the, in having to do, I'm sorry, having to do with, well, my, my, I'm sorry, I'm very tired, what can I say? And this is my last time, so I'm just going to be going. Anyway, the, there's a lot of stuff that, that happens with, you know, the state and that sort of thing, so I'm not going to go into all that because it's, it's just not happening at this point, okay? And I, I know that if you, you were at the round table, Trent, and I think that maybe there was something that came out there, I know there were a few things that happened, but this was, there's not, there's not much more of this. And I do want to say that this was the thing that this particular holiday celebration had Mayor Kim Maggard and another, many other ones that are leaving and, you know, retiring like me, and it was a wonderful time for, for that, and that was before, for that, so. With this, I want to thank Morpsy for 12 years of wonderful thing, so that's, that's all I really have. Oh, and there's a whole bunch of stuff that I sent to our Jeremy, and, and he has put that all on, so you'll have it. It's going to be good.
Thank you. It's, it's hard to imagine that after all these years of Morpsy being around, the Brown Township is finally getting around to actually becoming a member.
Yeah.
Do you have any, what's the story on that?
I, I don't know the story because it's really, it's a small, small thing, so I don't know why, why they, they want to come in, but they do want to come in, and there's a lot of things that are going on, you know, and you can get, and all of the wonderful things that Morpsy can offer them.
Conventions and Visitors Bureau, Ms. Padova.
Thank you. Visit Gahanna has been busy promoting all of the fun things going on here in Gahanna this holiday season, and from now until December 25th, children and adults, if you'd like, can call the Santa hotline presented by Visit Gahanna and Futurecom Technologies, and you will hear a different message each day from Santa. The number to call is 614-478-1061. The winter edition of the Herbal Cocktail Trail was recently released, and there are nine establishments on that. So if you enjoy at least six of those cocktails, you can turn in your passport to Visit Gahanna for a new prize for the Herbal Cocktail Trail. And if you have not heard, Gahanna's own Marlowe's Cheese Stakes made it in 614's top 25 restaurants in Columbus. They were listed as number 15, which my husband would probably say should go up, bumped up a little bit more there. And the last thing is to mark your calendars for the evening of January 27th for a soiree at the Sanctuary, which is being planned by the committee for Gahanna's 175th anniversary. So this will be the fundraising event that kicks off a year of fun activities for the 175th anniversary, and that's all.
Sounds like fun. Thank you. All right, school board, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you. Just very briefly, and welcome to School Board President Burl Picklantonia, who's joining us tonight. I wanted to mention that the district announced a new start and end times for school for the next school year, 2024-2025. This shifts middle school and high school start times back to later in the morning and extends the elementary day about 20 minutes. The change was based on significant research into best practices for students with community input and based on transportation considerations, and I think overwhelmingly I have seen positive feedback from the community about this, and I am grateful that my kiddo will have a little bit extra in classroom experience next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Item M, official reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Angelou. Given what happened and what was said in this chamber's last Tuesday, what was said at Morpsey on Thursday, the comments that were said earlier this evening, there's not a whole lot I could add to the accolades that have been bestowed upon you for your 34 years of service. What I can say is that I will miss your smile across the dais. I will miss your vision and your understanding of how Gahanna fits within the ecosystem of the Columbus region and why that's important, and I will miss your ability to cut through a conversation to get to the true issue at hand. I would say I would miss your friendship, but I know that's not going anywhere. So I look forward to our continued breakfast, but I thank you again for your 34 years of Gahanna. Thank you for your leadership and your mentorship to me, and I look forward to our next cup of coffee. Ray, it's been an absolute pleasure and an honor to work with you over these last four years. We did not know each other before January of 2020. We've had a relationship that was forged by the fire we were thrown into, 70 days into office, both of us. But I quickly came to respect and admire your professionalism, your dedication to your role, the thoroughness with which you approach your work, your timeliness, your openness to collaborate and work together to find a solution to a problem, and your courage to make decisions that are legally appropriate even though you knew they're not the easiest decisions, and they're decisions that don't make everybody happy. That takes true courage, and I really respect that about you. You stay true to your commitment to always keeping in mind the best interest of all of the residents of Gahanna, and as a fellow lawyer myself, I have greatly appreciated your work. I will miss lamenting about the Steelers while we're sitting here. I will miss the heater you bring to city council meetings because it gets cold here, and I will miss the camaraderie that we shared on a daily basis, working together. But like Councilwoman Angelou, I also know that this is not the last, and we could, thank you, you had my first bourbon tasting. I shouldn't probably share that, but we had that, too. But I know you're not going far either, but I just wanted to say how much I have enjoyed working with you and have appreciated your work. Council, I'd like to extend my thanks to you for passage of the 24 budget this evening. By working together, we truly have been able to accomplish tremendous things for this city over the last four years. This budget that you've passed tonight largely positions the city to continue our work in moving the city forward for the betterment of all of our residents, and the investment in human capital also ensures that we will be able to continue to retain and attract the best and brightest to serve our residents. And if I'm talking about the budget, I would be remiss in not recognizing our award-winning Director of Finance, Joanne Burry, eight, nine years running now, Joanne, is that right? As well as our Budget Analyst, April Kincaid, for their exhaustive work in preparing and finalizing the budget. We've talked a little bit before about what the budget process is from beginning to end. It's about an eight-to-nine-month process. We have about a three-month respite, and then we'll start this process all over again. Countless hours are spent gathering information, researching, evaluating, challenging requests, forecasting and planning. Director Burry and Ms. Kincaid lead the way, but that also involves the work of everybody you see sitting right here, our two senior directors, Directors Volmer and Schultz, our Senior Deputy Director, Corey Wyman-Singer, everyone of our directors, our managers, our superintendents. I'll devote countless hours to putting this budget together and evaluating the express needs and wants of the community and how to best do that in a way that truly follows public value. So like council, I've heard it said many times, and we agree with you, I and every employee of the city each bear a heavy burden and a concern for ensuring that we are delivering high-quality services to our residents and that we are doing that in a cost-effective manner that truly values the investment of the taxpayer dollar. So I'd like to thank our team. They've been here week in and week out throughout this budget process. I think they put in two days last Monday, just last Monday. But I want to thank you for your dedication, for the people who are, I know, we have team members who are watching, for their dedication and commitment to always focusing on the public value and protecting the investment of the taxpayer dollar again, and I appreciate their work. With the budget that's been passed this evening, we look forward to continuing our new work and our work coming up in 2024 as we address critical needs of the city. Councilman Schnitzer identified the three, I call the three Ps, public safety, public service, parks and recreation. From infrastructure and facilities to enhancing public safety to the quality of life projects that our Parks and Recreation Department will look to that impact parks and playgrounds and trails, 2024 promises to be another exciting year, and our administrative team and I look forward to working with you as well as our new electeds that are here in the audience tonight as we continue to move Gahanna forward. And otherwise, I would just close by wishing all of you a wonderful holiday and Happy New Year, and thank you for your time, especially over these last few weeks as we have talked about these budget discussions. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Item N, council comment. Ms. Angelou? My gosh. I'm too anxious to leave. I am sorry. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, President Renner. Thank you for the resolution. I sincerely appreciate it, and as usual, I have nothing further to add.
Thank you, sir. All right, council comment. Ms. Angelou?
Well, I have a lot to add, but I'm not going to. What I want to do is talk about Gahanna's vision and Gahanna's mission. Gahanna vision we have, and was in one of the things this afternoon or this evening, is to be an innovative model community that values its rich heritage, pursues high standards, promotes respect among its citizens. We should never be, this is every day you should be running past this. Gahanna's mission is to ensure an exceptional quality of life, providing comprehensive services, financial stability, and well-planned development which preserves the natural environment in order that city government will continue to be responsive, accessible, accountable to our diverse and growing community of citizens. This is, this vision and mission statement explains the role of Gahanna government succinctly. The core tenets are the basis by which decisions should be made for the health, peace, safety, and welfare of the people of Gahanna. The words appear on every agenda. They are a beacon that guides the city in economic climate, sunshine, or storms, and I think there are times when we forget about this, and we should never forget about it, and I want to bring up something on that. There are challenges, and to the Gahanna vision and mission statements, that is where I would always go. Local government exists to provide services citizens cannot do individually. It's that easy. Safety is always number one as a community, can only excel if its citizens feel safe. I support RPD and the needed equipment to protect officers so they can protect us. On the road, repair programs, the same thing goes. This can help to lower accidents, vehicle repairs, raise the values of homes, and improve quality of life. This is an important thing to remember, and I ask for our person who is going to be taking my place here to take this and look at it and read it every day because it has the exactly things we should be doing together, and we need to be a family. This should be a family, our committee, our whole, everybody here should want to be part of this family, and so I wish you all the best in what you are going to be doing as of January 1st, and I hope that everything goes very, very well, and if anybody wants to, you know, ask me to come and see something, I'll be very happy to do it. But thank you so much. This has been quite a month for me, and I can only say thank you. Thank you, and God bless all of you.
Thank you. Mrs. McGregor?
Thank you. I want to say, Ray, thank you for your many years of service to Gahanna and as a prosecutor and the last four years, especially as city attorney. Karen, even though I've served 16 and you've served 32, 34, we've only served eight together, and that's been the last eight. And so I really appreciate your years of service. I appreciate you as a colleague and a friend, and most of all, sister in Christ. And in the spirit of the holidays coming up, I would like to read from Luke, Chapter 2, verse 10. "And the angel said to them, 'Do not be afraid; I bring you good news of great joy that will be for all people. Today in the city of David a Savior has been born to you. He is Christ the Lord.'" Wish everyone a happy holidays and a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Padova?
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues tonight for supporting the tobacco licensing ordinance. I also want to thank Clerk Van Meter and Mr. Roth for their help in crafting this legislation, and Mr. Holfinger from the American Heart Association, who has been a wealth of information along the way. As he mentioned, passing this sends a message to our state senators to protect home rule. So I encourage my colleagues and especially any residents who are supportive of this ordinance to please reach out to your, or our state Senator Michelle Reynolds so that your voice can be heard on this issue. The State Department of Health simply doesn't have the resources to be everywhere, so that's why it is important for communities to fill that enforcement gap. Unfortunately, I was not able to make it to Mrs. Angelou's celebration last week. However, 34 years is certainly worth celebrating. Whether I'm talking to Mrs. Angelou about Gahanna or Capital University, her face will surely light up. Your love of our city shines through in every conversation, and I will always respect and admire that, so thank you so much for your many years of service.
I'm a cat fan, too.
Well, I don't know what the next 34 years will bring for me. I do look forward to the next year and celebrating Gahanna's 175th anniversary. Until then, I hope that everyone can find peace and joy when needed over the holiday season and stay safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers?
Thank you. Just very briefly, I wanted to thank Attorney Malarsky for his service, both as a prosecutor and as a city attorney. The last four years, there have been, of course, many challenges, especially weathering a pandemic and going through our first, I think, year and a half as newly electeds on Zoom or Teams, as the case may be, and I know we weathered that all together. I wish you well in the next, in the years ahead, and I'm certain that you'll continue to represent clients well in your next chapter. Congratulations to Councilwoman Angelou on over 30 years of public service. I wish you very well in retirement, and I do very much plan on calling on you for guidance, and I'm sure I'll have questions that come up, and so I look forward to your offer to support because I know that we could always use it. I know that we have been able to collaborate on air quality resolutions and other resolutions, recognizing the honor, excuse me, the history of Gahanna, and so I hope to be able to call on you to draw on your institutional wisdom going forward. And finally, I did bring you a Hershey's bar today.
I was wondering who bought it.
And I know that we have sometimes ribbed each other about attendance, or rather, you have encouraged me to remember that attendance is important, and you are absolutely right because you can't do the job if you don't show up.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
So I wish you very well.
Thank you, Marissa.
You're very welcome. I have submitted a constituent report and request Clerk Van Meter to append that to the minutes to highlight the work that happened over November, and I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a very Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schnitzer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Not a ton to add. I'll just say, Karen and Ray, after all the various resolutions, proclamations, open houses and so forth, highlighting decades of service to this community, I'm left feeling a bit inadequate. But on a more serious note, you both have left, you know, really positive and lasting imprints on this community, and frankly, we all owe you a debt of gratitude. I do want to acknowledge PD, particularly in light of the public comment video that we heard. You know, our officers go to work every day, and frankly, they are everyday heroes, and I hope we all acknowledge that. And with that, I just wish everyone a joyous holiday season and a Happy New Year.
Vice President Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to make a brief comment on the budget. I do think we had a lot of healthy conversation, a lot of Q and A. I appreciate all of the hours the staff has put in, both in the background but as well up here. I know I was getting emails on the weekend as well from you answering questions, so it is greatly appreciated. What is unique about this budget and I think sets us up well for 2024 is its interplay with the capital improvement plan, so I look forward to seeing it in action. Mr. City Attorney, thank you for your service. I have come to rely on your guidance as recently as last week, and it's greatly appreciated, and I thank you very much for your years of service to our city. Ms. Angelou, my colleague, thank you so much for your decades of service to the city. Your warm welcome when I was first elected was one of the first, and I greatly appreciate it, and your warm welcome at Morpsey as well. Greatly appreciated. The open house last week was very moving, and what a tribute to the legacy that you have made and are continuing to make and are leaving for us as well. Very fun seeing those old pictures of you and Dick. Just on a personal note, you know, it's about the same age, I think, when, in some of those pictures, as you and with my wife and embarking on our family journey as well and our careers in public service. It's knowing that it's a lot of hours and a lot of work, but it all pays off, and so I thank you for your legacy, and I wish you nothing but the best in your next chapter, and I echo Ms. Bowers that I will absolutely call on you for your guidance, and I hope you will pick up the phone. That being said, thank you to everyone who spoke this evening during public comment, and thank you to our wonderful Division of Police. That was a wonderful tribute to the work of our officers and our dispatchers, and also to the importance of that mental health liaison, critical role, and we are blessed in this community to have it. So all that being said, wish everyone... So all that being said, wish everyone a wonderful holiday season and a wonderful new year, and we will see you in 2024.
Mr. Weaver, I'm not going to forget this.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Karen. You know, in 2012, I was newly elected, took the oath, and you definitely welcomed me with open arms, and you've taught me quite a bit. There were times where we, it was like a roller coaster life. We would vehemently disagree.
The one and only.
And we would, then we would actually very much agree on certain elements. And through all that time, you never lost your composure. You never lost your faith in our community, and you never lost your faith in the team of colleagues up here. We're seven different people coming at it from seven different ways, and you always champion that togetherness and that wholesome. Like I said, at our recognition and tribute to you, I don't think there is any better, when I was looking around for a quote, than that was given by U.S. Ambassador to Israel, Jack Lew, at a United Nations Public Service Day. And he said, "I think there's no higher calling in terms of a career than public service, which is a chance to make a difference in people's lives and improve the world." And Karen, you have done that definitely with your 34 years. Ray, thank you so much for your service. You brought a different level of fresh air to council. You were always very transparent and actually told us from day one exactly what court cases or any impending cases. And I, I told you then and today, I was very appreciative because we never really got that before. And so you definitely brought that. And you were always mindful of being a parliamentarian about our council rules, and so I definitely appreciate that as well. So thank you, sir. My hat's off to you and have a retirement. Chief, thank you for what the police do. As you heard, I, the, some of my colleagues up here, and the video was actually really, again, a tribute to your department and your staff. And so keep up, thank you so much, and keep it up. And very much appreciated having the color guard here the earlier today for Councilman Angelou. It's always a treat to actually serve colors, and thank you. Our budget, I, I know that there's still probably a little bit of animosity inside City Hall about council, maybe even directed at me or some of the other members. But please remember that it is a challenge. When I first started on council, general fund budget was right around 20-ish million. Now it's grown to, well, we just passed 34 million. The city's entire budget was just south of 60 million, and now it's 93 million plus. So there's a lot going on, and it's a tribute to you and the mayor for all the projects that are happening. But it's also a matter of importance that these seven members up here take it on and do their due diligence and analyze it. It's not meant to be personal at all. It's meant to just prove to the people that we are doing our job and making sure that what we pass is actually something that we could answer to our constituents when they come and challenge us. But thank you so much for coming back with detailed reports, even all the way up until the 11th hour. We got it this weekend. We got some additional information. And as you heard, we had to go through the process of thinking about it and asking questions, clarification, what have you. But thank you. Thank you for always holding your composure and actually going through. And next year, I look forward to actually seeing a lot to get done, as, as promised. And with 825 Tech Center Drive coming, the new City Hall and all the machinations that go with that, and all the other expectations that our constituents have actually come enjoy the services. I think we have a lot to get done, and I look forward to actually getting through the challenges with you. Finally, I want to thank my colleagues on council for giving me this opportunity to be your president. It's, we, as you could tell, the times are changing a little bit. We're getting through some more challenges and, but I, I really respect your professionalism and your diligence when we go through and including the public speaking and the care of our constituents. A lot of people, we've noticed, that don't necessarily have the coping skills, but we've weathered through them and actually we've dealt with them, and so thank you. So with that, I want to just say happy holidays, peace be all with you, and enjoy the, the Christmas season and the new year. Thank you. Do you have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Thank you.